I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and get a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. You call the roll, Sherry.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins. Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the board, come on up. You'll be limited in time to three minutes.
Five minutes.
Excuse me, five minutes.
Betty Otten, 4678 7270 Third Street in T. I actually sent you guys an email requesting to be on this agenda, and I see that when it wasn't, I emailed you all again asking why it wasn't. So here we are again. So as that didn't happen, I'm going to formally request publicly asking for it to be included on the next agenda because as Chad and I have been here for the last year and a half, a simple explanation last week about why the timer was needed was certainly would have been expected from either one of us. So I'm bringing it up. Again, who ordered it and why? It has never been on any previous Lincoln County Commission agenda for the past year and a half, and the vote of the full commission and discussion was never taken. Again, who asked for it? What was the cost? But more importantly, what was the reason behind adding a physical timer? Who's supposed to use this? Is it just the commission for public comment or for other committees? Was it also on their agenda items and voted on by their full committee? So I'm just asking that it formally be added. A simple explanation was all we would have asked for. I also want to probably take some thunder away from Commissioner Aaron's, but I also want to take this time to honor all of our World War II service members, many of whom are no longer with us, including my dad, Master Sergeant William King. He didn't die in battle, but he is no longer serving with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to come up and comment? If not, then we'll move on to the commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report they'd like to make today?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. First note I have here is tonight at four o'clock at the, let me see where this is at, the Game Fish and Parks Department is holding a public meeting on the future of the Spring Creek Golf Course. And for those of you who don't know, Game Fish and Parks has a 10-year plan where they want to develop the Spring Creek Golf Course into some kind of local recreational area. You know, for example, there look, one of the plans is to turn it into a campground, which certainly has the residents of the Spring Creek area concerned and engaged on the issue. So Game Fish and Parks is holding an opportunity for public comment tonight on two different occasions. The first meeting is going to be at the outdoor campus Game Fish and Parks Center, and that's at four o'clock today. And then they're holding a second public meeting at Good Earth State Park Visitor Center tonight at seven o'clock. So for those people who are concerned or engaged or worried or just interested in what's going to happen with the Spring Creek Golf Course Recreational Center Plan, they can attend those two meetings tonight. So I wanted to put that on the public's radar as well as on the commission's radar because the development of what's going to happen out there is important to future growth and development in Lincoln County. So, and then second of all, Betty, I didn't get your email. So maybe you want to, maybe you want to check where you were sending emails to me? I didn't see anything from you about your comments. So if you want to check what email address you sent that to, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a report they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, I have a couple for your consideration. This afternoon, I intend to go up to Brookings County at an invitation from their commission to visit the opening of their new jail that they have been working on, or their public safety center. They have a unique system where they are combining their facility with the city of Brookings and the county work together, but they've had an expansion, and I plan to go up there for that. I too want to say thank you to all those people that have worn the colors because this is a day, 80 years ago, as you can remember, we were attacked and America once again was forced to go to war. Betty, I have relatives as well that were serving in that, and I even have a relative that was over in there at the time. So appreciate your service for your father, too. The other thing, commissioners, I have some very interesting news for you, and I think it's going to certainly enhance our ability to use some of the funds that we have been given for our COVID and our relief. So yesterday, we had a meeting, yesterday, the NACO Board of Directors had a meeting with their official representative that is lobbying in Congress. And we should give a special shout out to our congressman, Dusty Johnson, for fostering a bill. It's H.R. 5735, in which he and another sponsor from Georgia led the fight to get the rules relaxed as to how we can spend our money that we have been given in this regard. Because you know, at first, it was only for water projects, for broadband, and for sewer. Now, there's three things I just want to briefly tell you, and this is how it's changed. This bill now has passed the House. It is now going to the Senate. It allows counties to allocate up to $10 million of its ARPA recovery funds for the provision of government service, or $10 million, or 30% for infrastructure-related activities authorized under existing federal surface transportation laws, including local match for some programs, and projects eligibility under the Community Development Block Grant Program. It allows ARPA Fund recovery funds to provide emergency relief for natural disasters and for their negative economic impact, including temporary emergency housing, food assistance, financial assistance, lost wages, et cetera. And the last one really doesn't affect us because PILT is something that if you are like West River, you have a great deal of government lands that are not taxed. Congress will help relieve them by a PILT program, which stands for Payment in the Lieu of Taxes. This flexibility described above as are a tremendous opportunity to realize the original goals of ARPA, which increased local control over recovery funds. Counties can make the investment decisions that are best for their local communities. So it really gives us now flexibility on how we want to use or utilize the $11 million that we have been allocated as part of our system. So I think that Representative Johnson deserves a good deal of credit. The last thing, Madam Chair, is at 10 o'clock, I will be leaving to move to a conference call in which the South Dakota Association of Counties are working with Representative Otten and Steinhal, talking about their programs that they have for counties, as I mentioned, I think, a couple weeks ago, on how counties can be given the ability to put a small sales tax in place, which will help in building, for us, building a jail or building a courtroom space. Also, what I like about Representative Otten's program, it gives us for roads and bridges. And these programs are, I think they're on the cutting edge because what they really do is they tell the taxpayers when you want to vote. Would you rather have a sales tax or would you rather have a property tax? So it's going to be debated, but I think that it deserves all of our, from this county's, support in whatever one that is chosen. But I think Representative Otten's has a pretty good leg up right now. Don't tell him that, Betty, but that was the poll we took the other day. So anyway, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have a report they'd like to make? If not, we'll move on to regular business. Item one on our agenda? Is Tom here? Hi, Tom.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tom Roush, General Manager, South Lincoln Rural Water, 28647 472nd Avenue, Beersford, South Dakota. I believe that you were given a letter written by me that addresses some of our needs and concerns with the ARPA funds. And I am here to basically discuss any of those that you would like to talk about. Give you a little history on South Lincoln. It was formed back in 1978. We currently, at that time, at that time, we had roughly 700 customers. Today, we have 1,953. We also serve the towns of Chancellor, Worthing, Elsuster, Canton, Fairview, and then numerous dairies and agricultural businesses. We manage 1,500 miles of mainline, six wells, 12 other structures that boost water and move water through our system. South Lincoln has several projects it would be working on in the next coming years. Of these projects, three remain unfunded, which are the Hill Water Tower, SCADA, which is the supervisory control and data acquisition. It's a control system for our our system, and then Canton Booster Station. We have areas north of Canton that are suffering from water pressure, and I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Roush?
Tom, can you ask, what are you really requesting from the counties? Is this a grant or a loan, or what are you looking for?
Well, we can, we can get loans, Commissioner, and we do, we do have loans that we currently are paying off. We just completed a 35-mile pipe project in which we're funding on our own. So we're already into the banks as far as money is concerned. The biggest problem or the issue that we have is our number of users per mile. Our number of users per mile is 1.8 users per mile, and you can only push them so far as to what you're going to charge them on a base rate. And we're about at that peak. Commissioner Gibbons is on our system, and he's seen the increases that we've.
So am I.
Yeah, okay.
Tom, you mentioned something about your, the pressure north of Canton.
Yeah.
Yeah, previously, you said it was approximately 20. What was it?
Well, it can get down to, I'm sure everybody's familiar with Hiawatha Hills. There is a couple, there are a couple of people up there that during the peak of the season, which is in your July, August area, you can, you can find people up there that have water pressure that is less than 20 PSI. And I mean, we've tried to accommodate, we've tried to make some changes to improve the water flow up there, and part of that is Canton Booster Station. Canton Booster Station is currently on 476, or 472nd Avenue and Highway 18. We want to take it and move it north of Canton roughly one mile and then set it on a line that will actually do some good for this area. We did a great big looping project that is going to help all the area in our central part of our system. Everything from 287th Avenue or 87th Street North is all pumped directly out of the plant. That's the purpose of the water tower. There's no redundancy there that if anything should, if the plant should go down, generators don't back it up, whatever it may be. There's nothing there to supply roughly about 750 customers with water. It's a, it's a, it's something that we need to address. My main concerns, my main issues are taking care of the people that are dealing with the low pressure. And then our SCADA system is second generation. It's 14 years old, and it's getting hard to find parts for it, and that's a priority in my eyes.
Tom, of all these upgrades or updates or maintenance that you need to do, of everything you've identified, what's the total cost?
Total cost is 7.5 million. We know that there is other people that are seeking funds, cities, whether it be cities. My sister organization, Lincoln County Rural Water, they're looking for funds also. We're not expecting that kind of money. We're just looking for some assistance.
Is, you know, yesterday, the governor announced $60 million in federal funds for water infrastructure projects. Is your organization going to see any of that, or is it just too early to know?
It's like anything else. We go through the process to see where we, where we sit. I'm, I'll just say that I'm confident that we'll see some, yes.
And Tom, of those, of those three projects, the SCADA project, is that got top priority?
That's top priority for me. If I was to label them one, two, and three, it would be SCADA, Canton Booster, and then the Water Tower.
Thank you.
How much is the SCADA project going to cost you?
1.2 million. That'll control roughly, give you a little briefing on SCADA. It allows our, we have four people that manage this 1,500 miles of pipe in a roughly 500 square mile area, and any, at any time, they need to be able to access different areas that are moving water or controlling water. And for them to drive from the north end of my system to the south end of my system is about a 45-minute drive. So it's important to have SCADA. It allows us to control our system from any point within the system.
Does any, do any other commissioners have any questions or comments?
Tom, will you be making a written or a formal proposal at all to the county?
We can.
You know, I don't, you know, this is, you certainly make a good point because Rural Water has been, what a convenience, you know. It changed, it changed the world back in whenever, 78, I think you said.
74.
Or 74. But I think.
78.
I think, I think if you put together a formal proposal, not that that would have be passed or whatever, but I'd like to see one so we could at least discuss it, talk about it, and see what we say, okay?
Will do.
Okay. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Quick comment. I do think that Tom and those individuals that may be looking for additional funding for whatever their project should have an answer from us in light of the changes that have happened recently concerning how we can spend some of that ARPA funding. So I would encourage us to have that discussion and so that those individuals, initially, it looked like majority of this money had to be used, utilized for health and welfare and/or water and sewer. As we heard this morning, a majority of that money can be used for, I think, the term is brick and mortar. And I think those individuals and entities should have an understanding if there's actually going to be a pot in which to distribute or if it's going to be utilized for the direct needs of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item two on our agenda.
You have another one on that?
Yeah, go ahead. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Robin Dijkstra. I'm with Lincoln County Rural Water. I'm the manager there. I've been there for about 15 years. Lincoln County is a smaller, compact system than what South Lincoln is. We're about 270 miles of pipe, and we were incorporated in 1970. So we were the first system on the east side of the state. You have in front of you also, I believe, the, the information that was sent to be on your agenda to show you what we are looking for funding for different projects we're looking to do, system-wide, and then the portion that we're looking at possibly from the county. Main intention to be here today is to let you know that we have projects out there that if the county has funding available, we are quite willing to take that funding. Part of the whole project on here, you see that potential county funding, and that's two projects. One is what we call the Harrisburg rerouting improvements. Harrisburg is looking to do a roundabout within the city, and we do what we can, when we can, to move out of the cities with our water line, just for the inconvenience of being there. So with the roundabout they're constructing, rather than to reconstruct through Cliff Avenue, we would then reroute to come different directions to get around and outside of that area, which would be a benefit, I think, to both Harrisburg and to us to do that. The other is what we call the Western Distribution Improvements Project, and those are just transmission improvements on the northwest corner of our system. We are working with the city of Sioux Falls with the 85th Street Interchange Project that if we can work out a way that we can get our transmission line out from underneath 85th Street, from Tall Grass to Sundowner, we're working with Sioux Falls to put a second Lewis and Clark connection on the west side of our system. These funds here that we're requesting are to bring the water back out of that Lewis and Clark connection to feed the northwest corner of our system and to assist to bring the water back down to the west side. That's, that's what we're looking at for here.
Robin.
Yes.
Can you, I guess for the benefit of the general public, kind of explain how this process works? That as Sioux Falls grows to the south, there are these, you know, buyout provisions or takeover provisions for Lincoln County Rural Water. Can you kind of explain to everybody how that system works?
Sure. We have an agreement with the city of Sioux Falls, the city of T and the city of Harrisburg. This was a mediated agreement that was done in 2008, and from that, we have permanent service territories. Sioux Falls comes down to 106. Harrisburg goes up to 106. T goes up to 85th Street on the west side of the interstate. And it's, without having the map in front of us, it's going to be hard to explain how that works up. But with the agreement, we have the agreement that we can serve those territories permanently, even after Sioux Falls, T, Harrisburg would grow into the area. So there is a buyout, and a buyout within each one of the service territories. It's kind of confusing yet, but the way to explain it is if it is someone that was already connected prior to 2008, the city of Sioux Falls, city of Harrisburg, city of T would reimburse us when they move into that territory, that area. If there wasn't city limits, there would be no compensation at that time. And if they were connected after 2008, there's no compensation. I know it's kind of confusing, but it's, hope I explained it a little bit for you.
Yeah, I think when it comes to growth and development, that is a question that arises a lot, especially one that I get in the, from residents of the joint jurisdictional area.
Sure.
That Sioux Falls and Lincoln County share, that issue comes up a lot. And so just so you know, I mean, you're not the only one that struggles.
Sure.
Trying to explain it as well.
The service territory map helps some when we have that distributed or showing that.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions for Robin? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item two on our agenda. Somebody here from NAI?
Morning, Commissioners. Marcus Malin, NAI Sioux Falls. Here to discuss the 153 acres county-owned land on 272nd Street. There's two ways to go about this parcel, in my opinion. You guys could sell it as is, but the, the second option in my mind is probably the best option to pursue, which is looking at it as two different, really, it's two different parcels. The north parcel is developable, has significant development potential. The south parcel, calling them parcels, the south portion of the land has, you know, Nine Mile Creek runs through it. So there's, there's some wetland mitigation. There's some floodplain considerations. My recommendation is to engage with, with a surveyor, potentially an engineer, very minimal scope, to understand where's the, where's that line divide in terms of developable acres on the north end and undevelopable acres currently on the south end of this land. And to go through with that process to understand the developable acres on the north end, because that, that portion would be sold for development land cost, which is going to be considerably higher than, than the ag land or wetland value to the land to the south. Not proposing to do a formal subdivided process of that land, but to have a, have a surveyor, an engineer, take a look at it, to understand what is truly developable today on the north side and what is undevelopable today on the south end. By, by my rough calculations, it looks like anywhere from 45 to 55 acres would be developable today on the north end, abutting 272nd Street. And the rest of the land on the south end would be, you guys can have that conversation, but I know there's conversation with city of T, talking about wetland mitigation, several things that can happen with that, that south portion of the ground. But the north portion is truly development, development-ready now with that 272nd Street completed. I think a survey would be in the range of a few thousand dollars. That could, that could probably have this completed in the next month or two, and we could understand where that, where that line is.
Marcus, did you have somebody in mind that you wanted to use for the survey, or?
I.
No?
Yeah, I don't have anyone specifically to.
So Marcus, the division would be 76.5 and 76.5, is that what you're saying? Divided in half?
I don't think so, no. If you look at the piece, and we could pull up the map, but if you look at the, if you look at the land from an aerial perspective, let's see, there's a, there's a residential acreage that's in the middle of the site. His, the very south end of his land looks, looks to be, there's, there's a ridge there.
Yep.
So that everything, that imaginary line today and north, in my mind, is, is development-ready. Would sell at a development cost per acre price, significant price. The south end still has value in terms of ag land, working with the city of T, wetland mitigation, but it's a different price. It's a different price per acre. So you can, it can do two things. We can blend those prices and sell it as is of the entire 153 acres, or you can engage minimal scope with an engineer to understand what is that, what is that, what is that line? What's the developable acres on the north end and the, and the, and the rest of the land on the south end? And you put a price per acre on, on each.
Well, Marcus, if you took a look at developed land today, you wouldn't sell it by the acre. You'd sell it by the square foot because I think the Hagedorn addition, right across the road from there, has a, has had tremendous amounts of success in marketing that at a very high price. The other part we've always talked about has been potential holding pond for Nine Mile Creek to retention, to prevent flooding from downstream. And I think putting that in CRP, I don't know if that's in it at the present time. So, and also, I think Commissioner Aaron's talked about having mitigating acres that developers need to offset wetland. that developers need to offset wetlands, may have a tremendous potential for that remaining acres. So if you just spitball this thing, and you got fifty acres that are developable for light industrial or something, or commercial, that gives you about a hundred acres to play with down there.
Right, right. Yeah, so I know there's a lot of potential for you guys to work and partner with the city of T for those wetland mitigation credits that developers need. And continues to be more and more of a need, along with potentially considering putting some of that land in the CRP. So it makes sense to me to kind of look at that, you know, that north fifty, let's call it, and sell that for development purposes, get your price, and then continue with that south piece on the path of the wetland mitigation or CRP.
Man, sure, do we need action on?
Sorry to.
Well, we don't have anything specific as to hiring anybody specific.
So we'd have to put on next week's agenda?
I think that's what we'd need to do, in my opinion. I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts, but we don't have it on here to hire anybody in particular for professional services, so I think right now we need to figure out who we'd want to use. Go ahead.
Morning Marcus. Actually agree, and I do believe that this is, the end result is, is that we will split the two parcels, because part of my desire was to always maintain that lower area and keep it from being developed, although the costs are high, could be developed based on techniques that developers have of filling and doing things like that. But we've all, or most of us have sat here for many years and heard about Nine Mile Creek, and we ultimately have an opportunity to control that and not have that develop, and yet maybe enhance that retention. I do believe that we need to continue the conversation with the city of T, so I think that it's in conjunction, have somebody ready to do that line, but I think that decision will be kind of a joint decision, if the city of T does participate in acquiring the lower areas of this property. So to go out there and survey it now without that communication, I think, would be a little premature.
Sure.
But it is going to be part of it. So I do believe that we should have somebody identified that we'll hire, and maybe be in communications both with yourself and Mr. Golden and the city of T, so we can figure out what that line will be. That's best for both avenues of acquiring the most value for the taxpayers of the county, and yet retaining and holding that area for perpetuity to holding water in Nine Mile Creek.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Okay, Toby, you got item three?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm, city of Sioux Falls staff has prepared a presentation. They've got an update to two projects. The first being the southeast sanitary sewer area and the south Veterans Parkway update. So I'll just set it up and invite them up.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Cotter.
Good morning. Thank you commissioners for having us. I'm Mark Cotter, I'm the Director of Public Works for the city of Sioux Falls. We appreciate your time today. There's been a number of discussions about working forward and planning the growth and development of this very busy area of Lincoln County, and we've got a couple of key, I think, important updates to share with you today that will bring some more light to some of those questions, possibly as we kind of further define some of these future growth areas. The sewer work we've shared with city of Harrisburg, we appreciate Andrew Petrus being here, and their engineering firm Stockwell Engineers. We have worked with Robin Dykstra, it's been a good relationship, and we'll continue to. City of T has seen this, we've shared it with Toby, your planning director. Recently, we've shared it with our city council, and also we have a infrastructure review and advisory board that's made up of developers, private utilities, representatives, city staff, area engineers, just so we can continue to refine and, you know, make the best possible plans going forward. So today we'll really focus on two areas. First is that southeast sewer study. There's been some conceptual work in the past. We've really refined that, so we can update our 2045 growth plan, show you where the logical gravity sewer mains go, where the logical pump stations will go to serve that area, also be a complement to our growth boundary with Harrisburg. And then also, after that, Shannon Austin will give you an update on our South Veterans Parkway project. It's been a good partnership with the state of South Dakota. Just last year, they supported an agreement that they would fund the corridor, the final eight and a half miles of Veterans Parkway. City of Sioux Falls would fund the intersecting streets, those arterial streets. Combined project is about two hundred and ten million dollars, and so that effort is well underway, there's been a number of public meetings, and Shannon can shed some light on that. So, there's some introductions of who's here. Jeff Eckoff is probably a very familiar face with you, he's our Director of Planning and Development Services, he's here. Andy Berg, I may remember Andy from some of the drainage studies that we've partnered with you in the past, he's our city engineer. Ryan Johnson is our utility administrator. Ryan oversees three divisions of our utilities, water, water reclamation, and traffic light and power. Shannon Austin is our principal transportation engineer, kind of also AKA project lead on all difficult and long projects. And then Cheryl Boggs, our Assistant City Attorney. So turn it over first to Ryan to kick us off, thank you.
Good morning, first of all, thank you for having us. Ryan Johnson, city utility administrator, city of Sioux Falls. So like Mark said, I'll start with the sanitary sewer update for the southeast area. Shannon Austin will follow with some transportation updates. So the area we're going to focus in on is this area that's shown in orange, generally southeast of Sioux Falls and north of County Road one oh six. And there's two kind of unique things that make this a natural divide between municipalities and agencies. The first one is County Road one oh six, just a physical feature that really defines two areas, but also the gravity sewer and the serviceability of this area in the future. And we'll get into more details on that in just a moment. But this area has been looked at over the years. Two thousand and two, the city of Sioux Falls completed a master plan on sanitary sewer services and looked at different service options for this. And as time evolved, those plans continued to be refined, and ultimately ended up on a plan which the city would develop to the east with a large pump station, but also size that infrastructure to support growth and development and flows from this area going north, and then ultimately over to our wastewater treatment plant for final treatment and disposal. So that kind of set the foundation for a lot of plans that have been developed going forward. So what we have here in front of us is our city of Sioux Falls tier map, but what's unique and important to look at here is the black dash line that shows the joint jurisdictional boundary in two thousand. That was conversed and talked about amongst the agencies. In two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, Harrisburg and Sioux Falls, by resolution, agreed on those boundaries, that would be the delineation. Sands, at that time, we've just continued that discussion, and then said that area that went south between the interstate and Wester Avenue, seems like it would make more sense for Harrisburg to have that area. And that line at one oh six is going to be a very clean break between the two agencies. Just furthering that, and this is that map that Robin was just mentioning earlier, is the water service territories. And so again, that's south boundaries at that County Road one oh six, located just down here. Sioux Falls area here. And those are outlining the areas that, as Sioux Falls grows, and the details are very generally that we would buy out existing customers pre-two thousand and eight and start serving those. Lincoln County would still have the option of serving folks, but as the city grows, we would grow into those areas and start taking on those customers when it was appropriate. Again, that was already, that was discussed also with the city of T and the city of Harrisburg in North Lincoln County Real Water, and of course, city of Sioux Falls. So the two study areas, and I'll just touch on these, is the southeast area, study area shown here, again, in the southeast side of Sioux Falls. And a west side study area. Southeast area was recently completed, west side was, is still under progress. And these are extensions of a master plan that we've completed in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. And so we're just continuing to get a little bit more granular when the time is appropriate. Few details about this area. Again, County Road one oh six is a south boundary. Existing city of Sioux Falls limits is really generally showing this north boundary. Veterans Parkway alignment is shown in this dark black line cutting through here. Total service area is about nine thousand acres, ninety-four hundred acres. Feel like when you start pulling out drainage areas and maybe undevelopable ground, you're closer to that eighty-four hundred acres. Thought is, is when we start developing this, and when it's really appropriate, we'll start growing into it incrementally. And the thought is, in about ten years after we initially opened this area up, our planning department feels like there'll be about eight thousand households in a population of about nineteen thousand five hundred people. So about twenty thousand people, ten years after it starts opening up for development. When it's built out, many years from now, the thought is, the estimations are, it'll be about a hundred and seven thousand households and a population of about two hundred and sixty thousand people in this nine thousand acres. Again, just all projections. Schematically, have a concept of how this would be laid out, certainly a lot more detail. Just wanted to try to really raise up how we would lay this out. Thought is, is as this area, as Veterans Parkway is completed, very generally from west going east, sanitary sewer services would start becoming available. The first piece would be a small lift station here that would serve an area generally between I twenty-nine and Louise Avenue. And the thought is, we would extend this force main to our existing system and serve that for a period through our existing collection system. When the timing was appropriate, the thought is, we would build a larger regional pump station somewhere in this area here, and in turn extend a force main over to our existing collection system, and which in turn has been sized to deliver wastewater, not only from the east side, but also this southeast area, to our water reclamation facility for final treatment. The next piece of infrastructure would be a trunk sewer that generally follows Spring Creek, just north of County Road one oh six. And then there's, it generally gets somewhat flat, and there's another basin here. Sewer would be appropriately depth that we could extend it further on County Road one oh six very generally. That would set the backbone up for all the sewer services that would be coming afterwards. And again, as appropriate, we would start extending trunk lines to serve property and land adjacent to Veterans Parkway in the city of Sioux Falls, really filling in basically going south, or from the west and the north going south and east towards this pump station. In the distant future, and as it's appropriate, the thought is, there's still a lot of contour and ground in the very far southeast corner of this area, where we would locate a smaller pump station to catch ground here. Lift it again, move it over to a pump station here, our larger regional pump station, and again discharge it to the north, to water reclamation facility for treatment.
How large are those pump stations?
So this one would be about three and a half to four million gallons, per day capacity, and certainly expandable. Where also, a strategy that we incorporate is to put large equalization basins, is what we call it, in. So it's a kind of a wide spot in the road, so when we have peak events, that'll fill up, and then we would drain it a little more slowly into our system. And so that way we can manage the size of these pump stations, so we're not building it for those once-in-a-hundred-year type events, or one percent chance events.
How many people live in the green shaded area right now, if you know?
I, I do not.
No estimated population?
I just don't have a very good guess on that. So certainly, you know, planning for these areas don't happen in a vacuum. We've laid out concepts on how we would approach sanitary sewer. We coordinate with partners internally with the city of Sioux Falls, and certainly externally. But as far as internally, when we're planning and capitalizing projects, we make sure we're really doing those together. And so just some for instances, where Minnesota Avenue was constructed, basically going from Eighty-Fifth Street and the future Veterans Parkway alignment going south, city of Sioux Falls installed a sixteen-inch water main that would then eventually tie into our sixteen-inch water main grid that's put on every section line right-of-way to serve build-out of that area. Sioux Falls controls and operates the right-of-way in that area, it's not annexed. Also managed and operate the traffic signals at one oh six on Minnesota Avenue. Also have some area that's shown in this light green area, two thousand and six, eight timeframe. The thought was to allow a small package pump station to serve this area, which would in turn discharge to our existing collection system. The goal was only to use that on a temporary basis until sewer was extended from the southeast to relieve this area. It's to the point where portions of this system can't be added on to because we are at capacity in this system, and are just waiting for the right time to expand and put in a pump station to serve these areas. Showing here, BMP, Best Management Practice, that's an industry term for stormwater detention before being discharged. So it's a location of a future city of Sioux Falls detention or retention pond. Again, located between Cliff and Southeastern Avenue, and then Sycamore and Highway eleven, in these areas here. Lastly, again, just highlighting that our east side service area has been sized, and as we continue to grow, plans are being made to serve not only this east side, but also this southeast area with sanitary sewer at some point in the future, when the timing is appropriate. I guess there's where I'd like to hand it off to Shannon Austin to visit a little bit more about Veterans Parkway.
Morning Shannon.
Morning. Good morning, everyone, it's always a pleasure to be talking to you folks. My name is Shannon Austin, and I'm with Public Works Engineering. And I get the pleasure of talking about one of my favorite topics, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization and South Veterans Parkway. So this map, a lot of you should be familiar with, this is actually the MPO, Long Range Transportation Plan map, that we basically, the green dashed lines are the MPO boundaries, and the yellow are the city's different growth areas, and then Sioux Falls is right smack dab in the middle. So this map, the MPO boundaries are, have been the MPO boundaries for quite a while. This map, though, with the current growth areas of all the municipalities have been updated just last year with the formation of the twenty forty-five Long Range Transportation Plan. So a little history, the Metropolitan Planning Organization was formed in nineteen seventy-eight, and we have been busy cooperating with all of these agencies in the growth boundaries since. And so we've got a really strong cooperative partnership with all of the surrounding communities, as well as Lincoln and Minnehaw County, the state and federal transit and federal highway, as well as Southeastern Council of Governments. So one of the very early studies that we did, after I was recently hired by the city of Sioux Falls in the early nineties, was to look at another way to get around the city of Sioux Falls without having to go through Twenty-Sixth Street, Eighteenth Street, Thirty-third Street, that were already bound by the existing homeowners or houses that in the middle of the city, we just, we didn't have the space to add lanes. didn't have the space to add lanes. So we embarked with the MPO on a corridor study in 1995 to explore what we needed. Did we need another interstate system? Did we need a series of arterials? What we really needed? And so we determined we did not need another interstate system. So for those of you that remember, we didn't not, we didn't need a 629. It was basically just, we needed more arterials that would complement 229 and Interstate 29. And if you look in other communities all over the United States, you'll see that a lot of those communities have circular round or beltways that go around the city and this is their interstate system. But they also have a complement to those interstate systems of about two to three miles out, you'll see another, not, not necessarily a highway, but a regional arterial that has limited access and has traffic signalized intersections to let people on and off that corridor. And so that 1995 study determined we didn't need an access interstate, but we needed something that was going to provide more capacity than our current arterials, i.e. the Minnesota avenues, the 41st streets that we have access points every couple hundred feet back, we didn't, when we didn't have those good access standards that we have today. So in 2000, late 90s, and then also with the environmental assessment approved in 2003, we established a corridor that started at Interstate 90, the arrows interchange and then all went all the way down to roughly about 57th Street and then started to diagonal across the southern portion of the city and intersect Interstate 29 at the T interchange. Now, a lot of folks keep talking about, especially now that we're going through the public involvement process, you know, why didn't you just take Highway 11 all the way down to 106 and go straight, straight to the west? Well, it's a great question, but it did not meet the original purpose and need of the corridor, which was to build that corridor in a growth area so people could actually use it, as well as there would be an entity responsible for maintaining it. And if you look at, you know, where 106 and Highway 11 meet, that's a solid probably four miles, five miles out versus trying to, you know, put that corridor within that two to three mile distance from Interstate 229. So in 2003 then, after the environmental assessment and the alignment was set, then we came back in 2012 and we updated our alignment and just kind of flattened out some curves. We relooked at some areas north of Rice Street because we had a lion snake. I know a lot of you have probably heard about that lion snake. So we had to protect that thing and make sure that we didn't negatively impact its habitat. So in addition to that, we also had identified a noise and access plan, which basically said, okay, we have this great corridor that has access spacing every one mile in the commercial areas that goes down to a half mile. But then what about those arterials that intersect the, the corridor? So we wanted to protect the arterials, the Arrowhead Parkway, the 26th Street, the 41st Street, those that intersect the corridor. We wanted to also restrict access getting onto the corridor or getting onto those arterials going to South, to Veterans Parkway, just because we have a great corridor, we don't want to, we don't want to congest those intersections. So we approved, South Dakota Highway Commission approved a noise and access plan, which also then limited the number of houses or limited the closeness of the houses to the corridor. It set a noise level or a noise contour, we call it, 66 decibels that the houses needed to be back from the corridor, a certain amount of distance. And that's really important for the public input that we're, that we're receiving today. And as Mark alluded to, we have, the whole corridor is 17 miles. Our first priority was to get up to Interstate 90. In December of 2020 last year, we opened it up and instantly we had 5,000 cars. So you know that we're doing something right when people are actually using it. So with the DOT agreement that we signed last fall, we are working together with the DOT to then get all the way over to Interstate 90, excuse me, 29. So this map is on our website at southveteransparkway.com. There's a lot of information out there and it basically shows where we're starting at 57th Street and Veterans Parkway and then meandering all the way through over to Interstate 29. We will be constructing this in phases. We've split it up in two, two mile segments. So we have four different, four different segments. We plan to start our first construction in the red. So that's the section between Cliff Avenue and, and Western Avenue. And we're starting there because in the, in the time that the DOT was constructing Veterans Parkway up to Interstate 90, they also had the foresight to be buying right of way on the southern portion. And so there's a lot of the right of way on this red portion that's already purchased. So it's the easiest for us to start there, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it. It also has the most single family and twin homes adjacent to the corridor. So a lot of those people were not there when we identified the corridor. And even though the corridor has been on every comprehensive plan, every long range transportation plan, a lot of those people just didn't know that that corridor was in their backyard. And that's, the public meetings that we've been having this year, that's kind of a common theme that we've been hearing. So each segment's roughly about 50 to 60, the entire cost for the entire corridor is roughly that 210 million. So what's important to note is that every mile will be signalized, which is something we didn't do going to the north. And I think, looking back, I think we're just short one or two signals, but it's best to have large intersections like that signalized as soon as you, you open them up. We also have pedestrian crossings every mile because it's important that the growth areas on the south side of the corridor are able to go to the north to get also to the trail system, as well as, you know, bicycling is becoming a route, actually a commuter option for people now to actually go to work on, using bike or, or walking. In addition, we have an overpass over 85th Street. So 85th Street will not be an at-grade crossing. And then we also have an overpass at Burlington Northern. So there's just the two overpasses along the entire corridor. After we start completion or start construction in 2023, we anticipate that these, that, and we don't really have that detailed out yet as far as if it'll be led in two separate contracts, grading in utilities one year with paving the next, but each segment we're likely to expect about a two-year, a two-year construction timeframe. So ultimately, our corridor should be open to traffic by hopefully 2027. We are in the update to the environmental assessment period right now. We've looked at all cultural, there's no endangered species down here. We do have some wetlands that we do need to mitigate and try to minimize our impacts. We also are looking at noise as well as visual. So the visual assessment is something new that wasn't available when we first approved the environmental assessment back in 2003. So with the neighbors that we have between Cliff and Minnesota, the visual is becoming a pretty big topic with them to try to minimize that impact and visually from their back, from their backyards. So the entire project again will be, will be under construction for the next five to seven years. The next phase is from Western then down to Interstate 29. We've had some discussion with your Lincoln County Highway and Planning Offices on this little area down here, this little rural residential or industrial area down closer to the interstate. And so that next phase will be one of those, a lot of public involvement and a lot of public meetings we anticipate with that rural residential or that industrial area down closer to Interstate 29. So with the discussions that we've had along the entire corridor, we met with Toby Brown and Terry Floyd regarding Highway 106. And as part of, one of the outcomes of our discussions on the South Veterans Parkway, we've, we just felt that maybe it's time for us to take a closer look at Highway 106 with regards to access utility corridor, as Ryan had mentioned, you know, water going in. Robin had mentioned there's already Lincoln County real water. So Highway 106 is really going to be a pretty key part, part for the city of Harrisburg, the city of Sioux Falls, as well as Lincoln County. So we've been in discussions with Jim Feeney at the CCOG or at Southeastern Council of Governments. He's our MPO coordinator. And there's an opportunity next year to utilize some MPO transportation planning funds and study Highway 106 from Interstate 29 all the way to the border. So we hope to do that next year. So those of you that sit on the UDC will see that in the, in the next year. With that, this was a lot to take in, but certainly we have a lot of folks here to answer any questions for you regarding sanitary sewer or South Veterans Parkway, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
I apologize. I do want to make one clarification. When I mentioned build out earlier, I was looking at a West Side study. Build out in the southeast area was estimated at 29,500 households and a population of 72,000 people. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions for Shannon and any of the commissioners?
Shannon, I, I watched a video, I believe, that you put out.
Yes.
And you were doing a question and answer with Steve Hoff.
Yes, yep, Steve Hoff is our designer.
That was very helpful. That was very well done.
Yeah, it's, it's, Steve Hoff and I have, I unfortunately, or fortunately again, depending how you look at it, have been fortunate enough to be in the very beginning stages of, of, we used to call it east side corridor. And then it was Highway 100. And now it's Veterans Parkway. So I've lived through all of those names and so it's important that we tell people why it's there. And it's not going to be an interstate, which is the common theme that we've been hearing.
It answered a lot of questions that I had.
Yeah.
And I would encourage my colleagues, if you haven't seen it, to watch it because it, it's, it's very, very well done. You need to be commended.
Thank you. That's on southveteransparkway.com in case you didn't write that down.
Shannon, when do you, when do you anticipate putting a shovel in the ground for some of these projects?
So our plan right now, we are just in the very beginning stages of acquiring right of way from Cliff over to Western. And if all goes well, we would likely have a bid date in late 2022, probably likely in early 2023. So in '23 full year, we would be under construction in 2023 for that first red segment.
And that's the one you anticipate having completed by 2027?
That's the one that we would have anticipated being completed by 20, end of '24. It'd be a two-year construction frame. Yep. Cause that, that red segment commissioner is the one that we've purchased the most right of way. And so that we don't have a lot of right of way to contend with on that red section.
Shannon, I have another question. We understand the decimal level for sure, but now you have visual assessment.
Yes, yes.
Talk to me, what is, what does that entail?
Well, it's, it's been an interesting journey with the neighbors. It considers what there is outside of their backyard right now, which is a green space. And a lot of folks just wanted that green space, even though that green space is owned by the DOT. They just want something that they either don't want to see the corridor, they don't want to see the glares of the headlights as the, the traveling public is travel, is going down the corridor. They don't want to see the streetlights. They don't want the streetlight glare. And so we have completed the noise study and the noise requirements set forth by the DOT are not met. So there will not be a noise wall, similar to the noise wall that's on Interstate 29.
There won't be.
So no noise wall, but the visual side is more subjective. It's, it's basically your opinions. And so we have, we had a meeting last week, we had about 75 people. We had really strong support for planting trees outside of the right of way on the, on the property owners' individual properties, evergreen trees, you know, sumac bushes. I mean, anything that can block their view of, of the corridor. So we're going down that path of installing additional or planting additional vegetation along the corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Shannon? How about Ryan? Anybody have questions for Ryan?
Well, Ryan or whoever, could you flip back to the sanitary sewer district slide right there, that one? So a couple of questions I have for anybody who knows this is, do you have a timeline for annexation?
I think that's going to be, I can give some thoughts on that, but certainly services would come first and we would be putting in services going from west towards the east. Services would include sanitary sewer, water, and then when appropriate, streets. And then again, we're planning parks, fire rescue, police and fire and that sort of thing along with it. But it's really up to the property owners when those services are available. The next layer is going to be when the property is ready to be developed. Certainly a lot of ag land currently in these areas. Some folks want to farm. You know, as those properties go, then as they're developed and those services are available, it's certainly up to the property owner to start making those requests.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, that's my county commission district. I'm accountable to those folks and they ask me these questions a lot. And they're trying to figure out, they want to develop their land. They're in the mindset of knowing that it's no longer an agricultural area, although that is what the current use is. But the projected use in the future is now basically is moving towards developing the land. I think we even have some kind of action on our joint jurisdiction or joint planning committee or something like that of planning and zoning to develop another piece of property in the joint jurisdictional area. And so that is top of mind for a lot of people in that area and they're starting to ask these questions. And, and they want to be able to develop their property in such a way like right now, but with something that is generally consistent with the projected growth that's going to come from the south. You know, you may not have the kind of cookie cutter planning and zoning that you have in the southern Sioux Falls current boundary limits right now, but those folks want to be generally consistent with planning and zoning activities from the city of Sioux Falls, knowing that in the future they're going to have to tie in. And so I talked to Jeff about this and I talked to Mark about this is, we need to, and I think we need to do this within the next year, is we've got to, we have to flush out a more, what our vision is going to be for the joint jurisdictional area. You know, we've got to start putting some meat on the bones, if you will. And, you know, some of the development in the southern area of the joint jurisdictional area may not look like what development looks like in the southern area of the Sioux Falls city limits. And so certainly I see growth kind of meeting in the middle. And I think right now, people obviously are not going to want to, you know, hook up to Sioux Falls City Services because those people in the southern area of the joint jurisdictional area, they're going to be on septic tanks for right now. Now, do we require them to maybe design the septic systems to be able to connect with city services in the future? Yes. But I want to see a policy developed soon, or at least create a timeline for it, so we can stimulate growth and development in the southern area, but make it generally consistent with what we anticipate the growth will look like coming from the north down south. Does that kind of make sense? And I want to see that, want to start flushing those things out now, rather than just letting the growth overtake us and being overcome by circumstances.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeff, you want to come up?
Yeah, Jeff Akoff, planning and development services for the city of Sioux Falls. Thank you, Commissioner Aaron. So as we visited, you know, a couple of weeks ago when you were visiting with us about this, so we are constantly looking at our tier areas and our growth areas. We reevaluate them every year. We're currently under a pretty comprehensive citywide study looking at that and understand dynamics happen, schools pop up, different things happen that adjust that time schedule. But what we try to do is predict, of course, the closer we are, the more accurate you can be, obviously, the timeframe in which we can get utilities to that area and allow it to, to, to develop. The idea is being, as you manage, exactly what you mentioned, manage, control, growth as well planned, coordinated together with, with the county. What gets tough is when you get on that area where they want to develop, but yet we're not going to be there for a period of time, although we know between us, between Harrisburg, between T, we'll get there, right? And so how do you plan for that and how do you be fair to those? And that is the conversation we had, that's the most difficult. But I do want to assure you that there's a lot of thought and comprehensive work between the departments on that type of growth and certainly with your planning office, who's been phenomenal to work with. So we do take that into consideration. We don't take that lightly. We just want to make sure you know that we do hear you and we are working hard to work as close as we can with our partners.
Yeah, and I want to let you guys know, we need an updated comprehensive plan. You know, we still have a comprehensive plan that suggests that there's some rules regard- You know, we still have a comprehensive plan that suggests that there's some rules regarding the use of ag land and things like that in the joint jurisdictional area I'm talking about. I'm not talking about south of 106, of course. But we need to update our comprehensive plan, because there's ag land in that area, and we have these planning and zoning meetings where we still have these rules that say, if it's agriculture, keep it agriculture. But there's nothing in our comprehensive plan that has updated to reflect the reality of the, of the situation, the reality of the growth, the reality of the marketplace, because that's a high-growth, high-progress area. And, you know, you still get some of these planning and zoning meetings where it'll say, well, comprehensive plan says, keep it ag. Well, that's, that's because it applies to the whole county, but in this instance, you know, we've got to start, you know, reforming our comprehensive plan to take into consideration that there's going to be growth in the joint jurisdictional area, and I think we got to do two things. Number one, we've got to accommodate the landowners and the rights they have, and we've got to find a way to be able to allow them to develop that land, but to create a situation or create the conditions where that growth and development is going to nest with the growth that will come from the south. So, or from the north, excuse me, moving south. So I'm hoping we can continue those conversations, but turn those conversations into some type of concrete visionary policy that understands the reality of the situation we face, but most importantly, respects the rights of those landowners as well. And so we're going to, hopefully, we can thread the needle, right? Accomplish growth and development, accommodate the rights of the landowners, but make it nest with, you know, the anticipated growth that we're going to see from the, from the north.
Any other commissioners have questions for our friends from Sioux Falls? If not, thanks for coming down. Appreciate having you here. It's all very good information. We'll move on to item four on our agenda, first reading. Terry, are you going to handle that?
Now is the time for a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, titled "An Ordinance to Establish Overweight/Oversize Permit Fees for Roads in Lincoln County, South Dakota, Under Jurisdiction of the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent."
Morning, Terry.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Sherry, do I need to read this in its entirety?
No.
Or what? No? Okay.
We can usually just read the item.
Which you just read.
Which I just read.
So, I'll wait until you do this. All right. So, several weeks ago, came before you, and you advised me to move forward with establishing an ordinance to, to start getting fees for oversized overweight permits. So before you, again, first reading of this ordinance. I don't know, you got any questions on it? Hopefully you've all read this, read through this.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Terry, it looked pretty straightforward. The only question I had is, is this post, is this now going to be posted so the public can read it? Maybe it already is, I just didn't see where it was.
It's been on the, it's been on the civic clerk file ever since I put this on as an agenda item.
Okay.
All the attachments are on there.
I've only seen it as like an email packet, that's why I asked.
Oh, no, this is, this is posted out on, in the public packet for, for the meetings, agendas. Again, so it'll have, it'll have this, this document, and then getting into next week, I believe we have the fee schedule. I think the fee schedule is on here as well, but if this is something that's going to get passed next week, we will deal with, we will set fees by resolution after you approve or if the ordinance passes.
Thank you. And then, do you have the item five, the, the first reading?
I do.
On the other ordinance? Can you go ahead with that?
Okay, the next item is going to be, let me pull it up here.
So now is the time for the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, titled "An Ordinance to Establish Access Permit Fees for Access Abutting a Lincoln County, South Dakota Road Under the Jurisdiction of the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent."
Again, this is a new ordinance that we'll be creating here, and again, it's going to establish fees for any access permits that I, that go through my office. Again, I believe we, we set this as pretty straightforward, because in, within the, the application, the permit application, we have a lot of the guidelines and things are set out in there, so. And again, this will be the same way. Again, we'll have our second reading next week, and then if this passes, then we'll be doing a resolution to set those fee rates. And again, all these are part of the public packet, they should be accessible for the public to see.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have one.
Go ahead.
So if you, if you're in agriculture and you're somehow not able to get to your field or whatever, and you had to take an alternative route, do you have to wait then two weeks to get some kind of a permit if you'd have to put in a temporary driveway, or how does that work? I mean, we've had strange things happen, 2019 with flooding and, and other things.
So I've been dealing with the driveway permits probably for about nine years. I did most of them when, when Mr. Williams was superintendent, and in those nine years, I've never encountered a situation like that, where it's an emergency I need to get in. So typically, I guess if, if a driveway washes out because of a flood, I mean, you can put it back, I mean, it's a, you know, I guess the only time a permit is required, again, we'd require them for new access, updating your access, changing the cover, anything updating. And again, all old accesses that are in place, they've been grandfathered in when, when the whole, we did the, the access permit, revised that back in 2013, I believe, and they had a whole bunch of guidelines that go along with that. So a lot of that stuff is already in the works. This is just to set the fees, to, to collect fees for, for having them, so.
Thank you, Terry.
Terry, I have a question.
Your first reading, so keep it short.
Oh yeah, I just, this is not related. Excuse me, Madam Chair. This is just for information. A township that is experiencing a huge amount of new construction for single-family homes, and they all want a driveway on their township road, does the township have the ability to limit this, or how do they control that? Because there's one area, there's about, about four driveways, like a street, you know, there's four driveways within a half mile.
Yes, so they have the authority to, to limit or regulate the access that happens on their roads. And again, I've spoken with probably, I've sent information to probably a handful of townships that are experiencing those issues. Any of the stuff, the guidelines that we have to follow, we've sent them our permit. I've let them know, hey, if you want to, you want to use our permit, let me know, I'll have, have Brandon revise it so it works for your township specifically. And haven't had that yet, but a lot of questions, and again, I, I send any documentation that'll help them to regulate these.
Thank you. All right, Toby, you've got item six.
So a lot of planning I have to say, but I didn't make you vote on anything yet. So the Planning Commission has requested a work session for you, and that'll be held before, requesting it before their regular meeting on December 20th, it starts at 5:00. We typically do, on an annual basis, do a work session with the Planning Commission. Last year was one of the years we did not do it due to the pandemic, but typically the work session involves staff presenting some development statistics for both boards, and then we review the work plan or establish the work plan for the following year. And with that, I think a couple of the Planning Commission members have also discussed wanting to have a discussion with the Board of Commissioners regarding development rezones and, and some of the things that we're seeing or seeing, experiencing with over the last year. So with that, the only action I have is for you, if you're available, is to set the joint work session with the Planning Commission for December 20th at 5:00, which will be prior to their regular board meeting.
Toby, was there a day that you were looking at in particular?
Yep, December 20th.
20th?
Yeah.
I thought you said before the 20th.
No, it'll be prior to their, so their meeting starts at 6:30, so this work session will be at 5:00.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We can set it if you guys want to set it. I currently have a mediation scheduled that day, so I may or may not be able to attend.
I'm available that day.
I'm available.
Yeah, 5:00 will work for me.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Debbie. Hey, good morning.
Hi, good morning, Debbie Block, Treasurer. I'm here requesting a payment plan for a homeowner who has had some hardships. The parcel number is 2501404001A. Addition to West Lennox lots 1, 2, 3, and except, 1, 2, and 3, except north, 65 feet of lot 1 and 3, block 4. They are asking for the 2020 taxes that were due this year, and they would like to make $150, $158 payments through March of, of next year to have it paid in full.
All right, you've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. The next one?
Okay, and, and this one also is a request for a payment plan. This one is for the 2020, and they would like to include the 21 taxes in, which we don't know the amounts, but I just estimate it a little bit higher than what was owing at this point in time. The parcel number for that is 2103001003, Hudson's Bradley's addition, west 14 feet, lot 2, and all lot 3, block 1. They've had some hardships also, and would like to make a $130 payment plan through October of next year.
Thank you. Heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you for that. And Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Okay, move on to the next item. Debbie, you're requesting, you want to hire an efficiency consultant?
Yes, I'd like to hire an efficiency consultant to help the Treasurer's Office be more efficient and run smoother.
Sure, who do you want to hire?
I've been talking to Ida Bailey.
Okay, did they give you a cost estimate?
They gave me a quote, it would range from $26,000 to $28,500, and I would be able to cover that out of my budget for what I have remaining this year. It would be a four to six-week session.
Four to six weeks?
Four to six weeks.
Okay. All right, thanks for that clarification. I think this is a good idea. In fact, I think it's a good idea probably for every county office to do this, so I commend you for taking the initiative to look at this. Did you have a, did you get a contract or anything from Ida Bailey?
Yeah, they had sent something along with, with the quote that we could sign. I think it's on the, like, the last page. That area there, I think.
And what was the cost?
Between $26,000 and $28,500.
Is that hourly, or was it just a?
It is hourly, 225 to 250 per hour.
All right.
Madam Chair, to move along, I'll authorize the Treasurer to contract for this service.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second this.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I hope, we need to make government run better for people, and we need to make it run more efficient, and I hope we can get some good, solid, concrete action plan out of these folks as to how to make the office work more efficiently, and I hope it results in savings to the taxpayers as well, not just internal savings in terms of time and cost, although that is important as well, because I think at the end of the day, people want government to work for them, and, and there's a certain budget, you know, they're willing to pay for government, but only up to a certain price.
Right.
So I say, let's do this, and let's get some answers from them.
Yes, thank you.
Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Do you know when they were going to start?
As, I think, in, next year, but I have to let them know so that I can get it into, out of my budget for this year.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Okay.
I'm glad that was empty.
You're, you're going to have to add carpet cleaning on to your request here now.
Yeah, fortunately, he does have to clean up his own mess.
I do, yes.
What do you got today, John?
And I will get an earful for him, let me tell you.
What do you got today, John?
Uh, my first thing, item on the list is, I would like to move forward and, and see if I can get authorization to order the state vehicle, or the county vehicle for my department. It's, uh, was heavily discussed during the budget process. As you can see, it's, it'll come out of next year's budget, obviously that order will not be filled until probably, it's sounding like closer to six months from now. But those vehicles, those allotments that are given out are quickly being absorbed by all the other public entities. So I've basically down to three options, and I have those three options listed. I, my, my personal request would be to move forward with the Ford F-150 Long Box, because Long Box is very useful to me. The, the cheapest option is the Dodge Ram, but that does not have an extended cab at all, and I, and I definitely need to have also additional space to put stuff inside the vehicle. There was no option for a full second or a crew cab.
All right.
Does this replace a vehicle?
Yes, it'll replace the transfer, uh, transfer station vehicle.
And this was heavily discussed in our budget meetings, on the need for it. Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins.
To authorize the Department to purchase the F-150 Long Box, tune of 2890964, and then add the block heater for 150 and fog lights for 180.
Thank you. Is there a second?
How old is the current one? The transfer station one?
I feel like it's a 1999. I, it might be 2003, I don't know why.
This is the one that was transferred originally from emergency management, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, so it's already been transferred once.
Yeah, it was transferred from emergency management to the transfer station.
How many miles you got on that one?
Just right at 200,000 miles.
Okay, had it in the shop quite a bit?
It's been in the shop a ton this summer, and it still has a check engine light that we assume is something to do with emissions, but we really don't know, and I didn't really want to spend a lot of money trying to investigate it.
Sure.
How long do you anticipate to get the new vehicle? How long will, do you feel?
How long will I have it in my department?
No, I mean, do you think if you ordered it? No, I mean, do you think if you ordered it?
They're saying probably more than likely at least six months. It could cap it quicker. They can't honestly say, but it's looking like it'll be six months out. I did, I did reach out to Billions locally just to see if they had the ability to also match that price at government pricing, and they didn't know if they could or not, and I haven't heard back from them yet, so.
Thank you. So a motion has been made. I've asked for a second. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my second item on the list is it's, we're due to renew our water contract for the three reverse osmosis water machines. Once again, this has been discussed heavily over the last couple of years. When we eliminated coffee, we kept the water because we felt it was a health thing that helps improve the health of our employees by promoting the drinking water. Our old contract was about $30 per machine per month. It's going to go up to the, I guess I did give the monthly, but it must be a little over $50 a month. So because of the price increase, I did reach out to competitive bidding, and A and B Water is still the low bid. And we also would have the plus that we don't have installation costs since the machines are already here. They'll upgrade one machine at no cost to us, but otherwise, it just made sense to stay with A and B Water.
Does the city of Canton have bad water?
I would say yes. We filter the water to improve the drinking water. We filter the water coming into the building, and the water is filtered at each water fountain, and the water is filtered prior to each of the reverse osmosis machines. And I will tell you those filters, well, the ones coming into the building, they're supposed to be a year filter, and I probably change them every three months. And because my toilets won't flush if I go beyond that.
So the contract is just going to be with somebody to provide reverse osmosis?
Just for the three water machine, yes.
Okay.
Has the water improved since South Lincoln Mill Water provides now, I don't know?
I was hoping it would, yes. I have not seen an improvement yet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to skip over item 12 for the moment and go to item 13. Was Julia going to present on this? All right, we'll skip that one too. How about moving on to the airport grant application?
Okay, so that is, I'm just trying to find the briefing packet. Somewhere. This will allow an additional $32,000 of reimbursable for airport expenses. Criteria for reimbursement will be more specified in the grant agreement, which will also be before you for approval and execution. This grant should operate similarly to the other airport grants made available in addition to the AIP grants since last year.
All right, so you need it from us, just signing or?
Yep, it's approval and authorized chair to execute.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to.
I'm assuming your motion was to approve Commissioner Ehrens? And the second, the same? All right. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Julie, want to come up on the item 13, the approval of elected officials' compensation?
Sure, happy to. So during the budget process, there was several conversations about the elected officials' 2022 compensations. And so this is more just a formality for state statute to set those compensation rates, and they are as follows.
What are these numbers based off of?
It was a combination of market data and then also CPI.
So let's go through each of them then to figure that out. So which positions was market adjustments made?
All of them.
Okay.
With the exception of the State's Attorney's Office, or the State's Attorney, excuse me.
That was the one that was overmarket and was not adjusted downward to reflect the market, right?
Correct. But during the conversation, during the budget process, it was my understanding that the commission was supportive of giving the same increase to that position as employee, other employees.
And that's the cost of living adjustment?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Thank you.
So what is that amount? What is that percentage?
2.5%. And so the Sheriff, Auditor, Treasurers, Register of Deeds, deeds, and then the commission also were brought up to market.
Also was what? What did you say also was?
Brought up to market. Those five positions were brought up to market.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff? If not, is there a motion?
Moving along, I'll motion to set those salaries for those six positions.
Thank you.
As presented.
Is there a second? All right, motion fails, so we'll have to put this on the next agenda so we can figure it out.
Okay. Would you like any additional information?
I think all of the information was provided in our budget hearings that we were all present for. If anybody has any individual questions, they can certainly contact you and ask those questions.
That sounds good.
In the interim. Thank you. We'll move on to item 12.
Madam Chair, if I might, I was going to say she asked a question just now. If we'd like any information, I think I would, just to be able to present to the public so we can see what's going into this. And the budget discussions happened a long while ago. People may not have remembered. I think, you know, we're dealing with taxpayer money here. Transparency and timeliness is the most important. I do think it would help for the discussion purposes to show where these numbers came from and how the calculations were arrived at.
So can you just bring that back to us next week?
Happy to.
Madam Chair, I'm not here next week.
And you're not here next week. We need to set these by just the end of the year?
Yes. Legal? Okay.
Are you going to be here on the 28th?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe it makes sense to do it on the 28th.
Okay, I can do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to go down to the awarding of a bid, item 15.
Okay, so there was the 2013 Dodge Charger. We received three bids on it. Travis Johns 500, Paul Iverson 3250, and Ringwald Motors for 2580. So the high bidder would be Paul Iverson at 3250.
For a motion to accept Mr. Iverson's bid?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Move on to item 16.
Okay, so I have a quote from Interstate Office. I'd like to reconfigure the cubicles in my office to face the front windows. The extra parts they need and the teardown and the buildup of the cubicles would be a cost of $7,457.05. This would give everybody in the office straight view to the front counter, though.
Question. Is this something that Mr. Rambo can handle without paying somebody else to do the move around and installation?
You know, we've done some of that. We just did it while we did the recarpeting. It's a little difficult for us to do this, plus they have to get the new material anyway. So they're going to have to strike a lot of it to put it back together, so it makes sense that they do it in house, or not in house, but with the company.
Okay.
Can we just install a bell, like a little dinger bell at the window, and then everybody can hear it? Maybe pay $5 for that instead of $7,000?
We can just go that way.
I mean, is there like an abundance? Are there people waiting at the windows? They're not getting service, or?
Election time, it's quite busy, Madam Chair.
Well, for sure it is, but. Sherry, what is the, what's the need for it?
So that all the cubicles face the front, the front window so that people aren't standing there and that it's easier for them to realize when people are there.
Okay. We've heard the request.
It will also do, give me an extra workstation in case we have growth and I need to, or that office needs to hire an additional person.
Well, that's what I was wondering. If you, if you turn those around, I know during election time, there's often people working there with their backs to the window. Because there's not that extra workstation. I assume this would help with that.
Right, well, and then everybody would face forward, so.
Sure.
During election, I plan on having people at the counter, but then during non-election, then they are facing the counter.
Has it always been configured this way, the way it is right now?
Yep. Well, the way, not the way it is right now. I took one of the cubicles out, took a wall down, and that's why the price is less because we're using some of the parts from the cubicles that we already have.
Okay. Well, we've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll move to authorize the expenditure.
Thank you. Is there a second? If not, we will put this, we'll save this till the end of the year, I guess, or until we have a full commission. Since nobody's going to make.
That was, it was going to be an item out of this year's budget, but if I do it next year, I'm not going to have the budget for it, so.
I guess, Madam Chair, if I may, even though we don't have a second for discussion, I guess I'm not an expert in office arrangement, nor am I in a position to question what she, how she wants to set up her office to better serve the public. She believes this would better serve the public, and I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't support that. Sorry for the horse throat.
Well, and those are my feelings exactly, but it's not going to, there's no point if we don't have votes to do it and nobody wants to make a motion. Sherry, you were looking at, were you looking at doing that efficiency study in your office as well?
Well, I have an audit every year, but.
But I'm just talking about workflows in the office itself.
I haven't considered it, but I could.
Why don't, why don't we look at that and then see if they recommend doing something like that?
So just to be clear.
Yeah.
We're thinking about spending $25,000 to decide if I want to spend seven?
Well, I don't, I think that's what we're going to have to do. I don't agree with it, but.
Okay.
Well, is the efficiency study only to determine whether to move your cubicles or is it to actually improve workflow and substance, which is a much larger issue? So I don't think you're spending $25,000 to decide to spend seven. I don't think you should spend the seven. I don't think you should spend 25 to decide if you should use the seven, because I don't think you should spend the seven anyway. I think you should spend $25,000 in the future to improve your workflows, if that is something you assess that you need, and if Ida Bailey or a similar type organization would decide that, you know, we're a candidate for it in your office. So that would be my response to that. But you did just now say you were going to station somebody at the counter during the election, which kind of resolves the election-related window issue, which then only leaves us with non-election time period at issue here, which I think could be resolved through maybe other systems as opposed to a $7,000 system.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the next.
Madam Chair, I beg you to give me a moment.
Go ahead.
I guess I am just befuddled. We're worrying about $7,500, but yet we sit on a decision to decide whether or not to add courtrooms that cost us in the tune of $240,000 every month we have failed to make, take action. I think that's imperative that we get going on this and stop quiveling over how a department head, an elected official, wants to organize their office. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not you even need our permission to do it, to be honest. Bill, does she even need our permission to do this?
Because the dollar.
Center budget?
The dollar amount.
$7,500? Okay. All right, item 17.
Oh. So we, wow. So after a discussion with the State's Attorney and the Sheriff, I'm going to make a change to the 2022 budget. I'm splitting out from the Sheriff budget what would be considered the jail cost. So when you look at the website, you'll see that I've changed, or I've got the new listing on the website. The numbers are all the same. It's just two separate departments.
And is that just the funds that are going to Minnehaha County?
No.
Per the contract, or does it include prisoner care?
Nope, it would be anything in regards to prisoners. I've got some salaries in there. The prisoner care, the prisoner medical cost, fuel for prisoner transport, electronic monitoring. And then, of course, then the revenues for the electronic monitoring and prisoner board and care and boarding fees would be added in there as revenues.
All right.
And there, I mean, just, just a note going forward, there are some requests that the State Auditor has made in regards to some of our account numbers and our systems, so there may be minor changes. I don't know if you guys want me to come in and tell you every change that I'm going to do. This one, I thought, was pretty significant, so I wanted to show that it was being split, but it's the same amount of budgeted money.
Just further clarifies and breaks down what things, what monies are being spent on what.
Yep.
All right.
Is this being done for every department then, where, you know, you're breaking out the spending for each department? Because I mean, the jail still falls under the purview of the Sheriff's Department, right?
Well, if you look at the annual report, the Sheriff's Department and the jail is typically separated. We have not done that. We haven't recorded the jail separately. But according to the State Auditor's accounting manual, it should be a separate item.
Okay. So that's actually a change which the state, the State Auditor says should happen?
They recommended it.
Do you need, do you need action on this, Sherry? Are you just telling us?
Nope, I'm just letting you know so that when somebody sees that it's updated on the website, they know why.
Thank you. Bill, did we need an executive session on item 12?
Yes, it's for litigation, and then we also need an executive session for.
All right. So is there a motion to go into executive session under STCL 1252 sub 3? And I guess, actually, we probably have to go in for all of them, don't we? So sub 1, sub 3, and sub 4. I need a motion.
Oh, so moved.
Thanks. Thank you. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Yes. So you would have to know on the, by the fourteenth?
For my office, or for the wages?
For the office.
Yeah, I mean, they could probably get me a bill by the twenty-third then.
Is there anybody objecting to trying that topic again today?
Is there what?
Nobody's objecting to talking about it today, um.
I would ask that the chairman revisit item number...
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
So Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, ma'am.
Sherry was asking for, what was it, Sherry, seven thousand?
Um, yeah, I think you read it, seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred dollars to change the configuration in her office, um, so that all of the cubicles face the window. And the cost for parts and installation and doing all that was about seventy-five hundred dollars, and-
She has it in her budget to do it, correct, Ma, Madam Auditor?
Yep.
And she doesn't have it in her budget right now, next year, so the discussions were about having, um, an, like a workflow efficiency study done in her office as well, to see if that's something that would help improve the workflow in the office.
On, on that note.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, you know, the auditor's office does go through a intense audit every year. Plus, we have now got the fan committee set up. So if, to hire somebody for the efficiency, I think would be double dipping into our audit process.
It is, and maybe they are. Are they looking at the workflow process in your office?
The-
Either of those, the audit, or are they just looking at the numbers in the books?
They're probably just looking at the numbers in the books, but I don't, um, yeah, I guess I don't know how to answer that. If that's, the efficiency study was just for that, I don't know that I would need to hire it out to, for the workflow. I could talk to fan committee and see what their thoughts are about it.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I think if, I think it's better if the desks are facing the window, because if I come to the window and nobody notices I'm there, it's kinda like, I have to say hello, which isn't a problem, but anyway.
Madam Chair, I would offer a motion again to approve the expenditure of up to seventy-five hundred dollars for the auditor reconfigure office.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, for discussion.
Okay, any, any further discussion? If not, Sherry-
The objections, I mean, obviously, we got some guys that don't. Your objections are, is that just because it's the money, uh, money for that, or, um, what? Because it does make sense to me, if you're gonna serve the public, that you all be able to see the public, you know? So I don't know. I don't know your, uh, configuration. Is that a hard and fast, Sherry, is it number, or is that a projection, or what?
Nope, that was the quote that I received from Interstate. I did say, I did ask Mark if there was a way to get it decreased. I doubt there is, because it's simply buying the parts that we would need to make it work. And there's, you know, the only cost savings would be is if John and them did it. However, it's not John's expertise, so it'd probably take him longer to get it done, which would put the office behind.
Well, the other part is you're, you're operating with one less FTE as well, as we should remember, right? You never did replace that one person.
Correct.
So, given, given that, I don't have any problem with that, so. Call the question.
Commissioner Aaron's.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherry.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
I wanna say no, just to say no for something.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Be adjourned.